I just had to do that for you. Good? All right. Let's get started. Today is February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We are in the four P M joint work session. All council members will be are here, and I'm sure that Councilmember Blair will be arriving soon. Let's go over the agenda. Gosh, this is like, I haven't done this for a while. Let's quickly go over the agenda. We've got a council meeting. And not too much on the council meeting. I think, Rich, you're gonna do Kathy Blaisdale, right?
Yes.
And then we've got Laura Lewis is actually coming up, or will we zooming her in? You know?
She's gonna be here.
Okay.
You didn't pay it after this, Jerry.
And then we've got also a special redevelopment agency meeting. Is there any questions about that? Mayor is going to give us an update on his tasks that we asked him to do for the Weber Housing Authority project. And where they're at with that. And so that's kind of what there's no hearing or input or anything on that item as of tonight. So unless you all want to have a different agenda item on that as far as a vote or not. But I think it'd be great to hear from the mayor if any progress that they've made.
Oh, just for clarity, right? We wouldn't add it tonight, right? But also, if it ends up not being in Ogden City, my understanding is it would never come back to the council, right? Because the only reason we broke housing authority was bringing it to us was because it was them operating in our city. So that item, if they move it somewhere.
They move it somewhere else.
Yeah. It would never come back to us, right?
Wouldn't we have to resolve it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, no, that's.
We have a resolution outstanding there. It's been on the agenda, so you would have to take action on it one way or the other.
Oh, okay, even if they weren't going to have the project in our city?
Yeah, I would think that we'd have to, but that is a good question.
Okay, no, yeah, and I didn't know. Somebody asked me, and I was like, well, I don't know if it would ever come back to us.
Yeah, it's more of a record thing, just to show the disposition of a resolution that's been on the agenda.
Okay. Good question. Other than that, yeah, let's move to the work session, if that's okay. Got a few things. The first thing is the twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four financial audit report. And Jeff? You'd like to come up and?
Yeah.
Yeah. Front and center. Hot spot.
Hey, it's great to be with city council again to discuss in a little more detail the results of the financial audit versus what was presented at the council meeting in early January. There was kind of some bullet point questions. I think the the proposal gives a pretty good summary of the the audit reports. It's in the work session packet of we had an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements of the city. Didn't have any significant deficiencies in internal controls of the city. Single audit, didn't have any compliance issues with federal regulations. The only two findings we have are related to state compliance, the one being the general fund unassigned fund balance was in excess of thirty-five percent of the general fund revenues. So essentially, that that formula is you take your unassigned, your committed, and your assigned fund balances, take the total of those and divide it by the total revenue of the general fund. And if that is greater than thirty-five percent, the state says you have more than what they allow you to have is that percentage of unassigned fund balance, which is really the amount of fund balance that the council has available for kind of their discretion of how they want to spend that money as an already committed to something else. You know, talking about that with the accounting department, we kind of had some late journal entries that weren't really anticipated. At June thirtieth, one of them was being a large gain on investments because the city's prevailing interest rates on some longer term. Now, is that have some investments that are more than a couple of years that have a higher interest rate than what the prevailing interest rate is? And so we kind of have to do this mark to market on the investments. So that resulted in some additional gain in revenue that that kind of pushed that amount over the thirty-five percent. So it's not like it was it's kind of just an unanticipated item that came up when they were preparing for the audit. And at that point, we were past June thirtieth to be able to have some sort of budget amendment to transfer excess funds or to encumber them for for some other purpose. So we did have to report that to the state. And then similarly with the budget, the I'll look at my notes here. The Weber Morgan Strike Force Fund was was over budget by about fifty-four thousand dollars. And I believe that was there was a grant that was received by the fund. So we had the revenue there. But then after the grant was received, we didn't have a budget amendment to to change how much we were going to spend out of that fund after the grant. So we went over budget from what we had budgeted at the beginning of the year, although we did have the money as a revenue source during the fiscal year. So that was just kind of a, I think, really, the recommendations we have from the audit are both related to that. It just kind of monitoring those budgets, especially as we get closer to year end, to make sure we have time to to present to council any budget amendments that are necessary to prevent that. And then similarly with, you know, I know Justin reported, talked about this a little bit of kind of monitoring those investment accounts. Because I think, do you get monthly statements from Morton or just quarterly? Monthly, but just kind of paying attention to what the fair market value of those investments are, you know, each month. And and maybe recording, recording that monthly as opposed to waiting to until the end of the year. Usually you don't expect that large of a fluctuation, but just the interest rate environment that we've been in the last four to five years, you know, kind of went the other way in twenty-one, when interest rates they kind of marked them down. And so then we were kind of underwater on our investments, or as the interest rates started to go up. I mean, sorry, excuse me on that. They started to push interest rates up, but we were locked into lower rates. We had to take a loss on investments. That happened back in twenty twenty-one, I believe. And then we kind of had the inverse happen as interest rates had begun to kind of come back down a little bit. So that that, to me, is kind of more of an anomaly, what happened with the the fair market value adjustment on the the city's investment portfolio. Any any questions on those compliance items?
What what does it take to cure that?
I I really think if if we record that monthly as opposed to annually, then we then we kind of know what's going on. I know they record the interest income monthly, but then looking at that fair market value adjustment that because they get a statement from Morton Investment Advisors each month that would show kind of what the investment portfolio is at with what that market adjustment is. And maybe propose recording that monthly as opposed to on an annual basis could help prevent that going forward.
Is there anything in state statute that says we have to do it by a certain time? Or, I mean, do we have to bring it down under a certain percentage?
We should be, we should be under thirty-five percent as of June thirtieth.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's kind of on the compliance related items. There's a couple of questions here. One was review the audit procedures during the two thousand and twenty-four audit, how we select items to be tested. Our audit, the main focus we have on audit is significant transactions. We always, every balance sheet item, we ask the accounting team to provide us a detail that makes up the balance sheet items. And we we heavily target the significant items in each each account balance to help us gain comfort with those balances. And then if we feel like additional testing is needed, we will do some statistical sampling of the remaining transactions. But it's largely focused on the significant transactions highly related to the balance sheet. But then we also do procedures on revenues and expenses of the city. All the significant revenue sources such as sales tax, property tax, franchise fees. We send confirmations out to the state and to the county to verify that those revenues are properly recorded. We have the city kind of reconcile the wages for the year to make sure that what's flowing through payroll is accurately reflected. And then we kind of do some analytical procedures on the the remaining revenue and expense items to make sure there's no large fluctuations year over year, or some new grant money that may be required to be tested. But it's really focused on large transactions. And then sampling is needed to feel comfortable with other balances that aren't significant. As far as accounting and management practices of the city, we feel like the city has a good internal control structure. They have enough accounting staff to maintain good segregation of duties. And and so we feel like that that facilitates good financial reporting, which I think the last couple of years, we haven't had any audit adjustments that have come from us. I feel like Corley and Justin and previously Lisa did a great job of having all the numbers ready for us before we came on site for the audit. So don't have a lot of recommendations from an accounting standpoint. Feel like they do really great work at the city. Recommendations, really, the only two recommendations are related to that budget item, just kind of monitoring those, the budgets of those. And it really only happens, I think everyone's really focused on the large funds, especially the general fund, to make sure we're not over budget. But just kind of tracking some of those smaller funds, because they tend to have a lot smaller budgets. So one little anomaly can can push it over budget pretty quick. So just make sure we're monitoring budgets across all of the funds. And the city does have a lot of funds. I think of all the the governments that I audit, probably Ogden probably has the most funds of any of any city that I involved with. So just kind of making sure we're we're checking that budget for each of the funds throughout the year and not just at the end of the year. The next item is about the city's fund to fund loans. And and I do think that's probably the one item in my mind that that council needs to address. State code does require that loan terms between funds not exceed ten years. Granted, state code doesn't, it doesn't give us much direction what to do if we hit the end of the ten years and we we haven't paid back the loan. Because I think at present, all of the loans are are beyond what the original terms were set between the two funds. And so once that happens, council needs to kind of decide, all right, is is this ever really going to be able to be repaid? And if and if it's that it most likely will not, accounting standards would say we should kind of forgive that loan between the two funds once we feel that it's not going to be able to be paid back. I mean, but conversely, I think it's a little bit tricky when we have funds to RDAs, because RDAs were kind of anticipating future revenues from the RDA project, which and and the terms of the RDA usually exceeds ten years. So the thought that we can pay that loan back in ten years is kind of, it's a little tricky, because we may not see increased revenues in the RDAs for until about year ten, if it's a twenty-year project. So I don't know if I have a great answer for that, but I do think it's something that management and council need to sit down and really figure out what we're going to do with those balances. I did, I did find it interesting when I was reading the code. It says if you have a loan from the general fund, that those loans are not subject to the same requirements as loans from other funds, as in they can exceed ten years. So that was kind of a thought I'd had was, well, maybe we we fund these loans more from the general fund than from proprietary funds. So it's just something to maybe consider.
Jeff, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do you understand? Turn it up. What is the purpose of that shouldn't exceed ten, ten years? What are we trying to accomplish?
I guess that's. Yeah, I I don't, I don't want to speak for a state legislator that felt that was necessary. But I really think in their mind, if it's more than ten years, it probably should just be a transfer that that the other fund isn't isn't kind of a standalone, that it needs kind of a subsidy from another fund to be whole. Kind of, I think that's the thought, is that if it's more than ten years, we probably should just transfer that money to help fund their operations as opposed to giving a loan. But I don't, I don't have an answer that why the state dictated that it be capped at ten years.
Yeah, I just thought, well, if there's some reason that we can meet, we can meet the, you know, the intent somehow.
Yes.
But if we don't know what the intent is, it's gonna be hard.
Yeah, I really think they feel like if it can't be paid back in ten years, that it it's really more of a transfer between funds as opposed to a loan between funds. Because the idea being, well, we're giving them a loan because we know there's revenue that's going to be able to pay this back. But if that revenue isn't producing to be able to pay back the loan, then we probably should just consider it a transfer between the two, between the two funds. So.
Thanks.
Okay, you're welcome. And the last item is any incoming GASB regulations. There are two new standards that will be applicable for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six, so not the current fiscal year. But neither of them are going to impact kind of how we account for things. It's much more financial reporting, so that'll impact Justin and Corley when they're preparing the financial statements for our review. GASB one oh three, they're kind of changing what content is included in the city's M D N A, as well as they're changing slightly the presentation of proprietary funds. So that won't change how we account for things. It's just going to change how we present items in the financial statements. And similarly, standard one oh, GASB one oh four is over the last five years, they've changed how we've accounted for leases and I T contracts. So before, we just kind of reported those as as expenses, been any long-term agreements we now have on the books of the city as a long-term liability and a corresponding, we call it right-to-use assets. And they're just kind of changing how we disclose the nature of those contracts to make it more uniform with how we present other capital assets of the city. But neither of those will change how the city's accounting for anything. It's just more presentation-related items in the city's act for at year end. So any other questions from council?
Any other questions? Yes, please. So I felt like torturing myself and clicked on a link that took me to the report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters. Can you help me understand what the relationship? And this was talked about a lot in there, internal control over compliance. Can you provide some meaning and context for that it was prominent throughout the reading, but it really didn't click for me on what that means?
Yes. So if I'm thinking of the particular report, you're talking about the the state. Well, every, every audit that's a governmental related audit, we are, we are required to gain an understanding of the internal controls of of the finances as well as compliance. So like the state auditor's office, they say for every compliance requirement that we want you to test, we want you to identify the controls that the city has in place to make sure that they stay in compliance. So as an example, when we're looking at the budgets to see if the city's over budget, we'll see what what controls do you have in place to make sure you don't go over budget? So that's kind of, so you have controls over the finances, but similarly, we should have controls over the various compliance requirements that we have with federal regulations as well as as state issues. So that's.
Yep, thank you. Appreciate that.
Comment, thanks. So Councilman Richard, at Audit Committee, and I just want to give a shout out to our administrative team and the auditors. I could not have been more pleased with the report when I first heard it, that you presented to us. And I I think being over, having overfunding in that particular area, sorry, I can't remember in the, that thirty-nine instead of funding, that would have, that's a good problem to have for us. I'm glad that we're there instead of being underfunded. And again, just to shout out to all those who keep such meticulous records.
Yeah, and I think I actually, I skipped over bullet point, now you bring that up. One of them is just to kind of, I don't love giving opinions on financial health of governmental entities, because that's kind of a you know, I try to deal in the objective and not as much the subjective. But the fact we have a healthy fund balance, to me, is probably the greatest indicator of of how how well a city is doing financially. You know, if we were on the other end of the spectrum at the five percent minimum reserve, it's kind of like, oh, if if something happened, if we had a negative outcome with something that that caused, you know, revenues to to drain up, you know, kind of quickly or for a short period of time, we wouldn't be able to cover ourselves for that. Whereas if we're closer to that thirty-five percent threshold, you know, we have, we have a little bit of buffer built in if if for some reason we have an unanticipated decrease in revenues. So that, to me, is the probably the greatest indicator of a city's economic health is is how much they have in that unassigned fund balance that that's available in case we need to kind of bridge the gap for a short period of time.
Any other questions? Thanks.
Okay, you're welcome.
And let's bring up Justin and Corley on the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four annual comprehensive financial report for or whoever is going to report on that.
Okay. All right. So just to go over kind of the process and the timeline of the two thousand and twenty-four audit, we had a pretty smooth audit. The preliminary audit work starts at the end of June, beginning of July. And then the auditors come for field work, which is when they're here for a week and a half to two weeks, and they do the full testing. That is usually at the beginning of November. And once they leave, we then start drafting financial statements. And Jeff and I send those back and forth. And probably three or four times. And then we finalize the audit report and finalize the single audit report, which is what we publish out on the website and what we publish in, we have a book that we publish out as well. And so we also submit that to the G F O A, which I'll address a little bit later, which is the government Finance Officers Association. So for a financial reporting award that we do, we really haven't had any issues with H B M E at all. It's been a very smooth process. So any questions on that process before I continue on? Okay, so the inter fund loans. Here are all the inter fund loans that we have currently. And I am going to skip the first two really quick because those are associated with RDAs and, but I'll come back and tell you what we have talked to administration about on resolutions for those, but I want to cover the other ones first. For our general fund to R D A for half a million dollars. Administration is going to recommend writing that off. That loan involves the C B D R D A area. And with the recommendation to write off, they would be coming to you with that recommendation. In a future council meeting. For the B D O R D A area to the R D A River area. We are updating that, we'll be bringing to you an updated promissory note. Currently a hundred and fifty thousand is being paid towards that each year. So we'll update the promissory note and update the amortization schedule with that note. And then the C B D to Wonder Block area, we are currently will be bringing an updated promissory note to council as well. Those payments are going to be five hundred thousand dollars. The C B D area does need a adjunction refresh. So those funds will be going into C B D to pay off the note, but then they'll also be used for that junction refresh as well. And then we have two notes, inter fund notes that were to the airport. The general fund to airport one, the very last note, that has had consistent payments and that should be paid off, I believe, in fiscal year twenty twenty seven. And the fifty seven thousand that is the B D O to the airport. We can, administration can either recommend to write off that or have it pay it back where the airport has had some cash flow issues in the past. We would actually like to know if council has any input on what direction we, they would like to go with that note as well. And then the two at the top are the refuse and sanitary, and those are both to R D A areas. So what we're, what administration would recommend is for the refuse fund to the river. We'll be working, we'll be updating the promissory note and working with C D to try and get, see if there are funds that can be paid back. This area closes in tax year twenty twenty nine, which is fiscal year thirty. And so we wouldn't recommend writing it off until that area close, closes. Like Jeff said, R D A areas are a little bit different because that income doesn't come in and right away. But we would be at least updating that promissory note. So we wouldn't have an expired promissory note on the center fund loan. And then for the sanitary fund to the R D A for the Swift Building, it, we would recommend the same thing. That R D A area does not expire until twenty forty seven, so it is quite a bit longer. But again, that promissory note would be updated. Any questions on those? So we are working with C D and legal to work through the funding of these, but at least get you updated promissory notes. So they're, we don't have those expired notes on our books anymore.
Just a question. Do, when, when were those loans originated, I guess? Like, do we know the dates on, on those? Is there a way to get that?
Yes. So, yes, I can
I'm sure it's different for each one, right?
Yep, it is different for each one. So yes, I can get you that. I can get information to your staff and get it over to you.
And then with the airport, you know, the opinion on that is, is there, you know, that we've invested a lot in the airport and we've got a commercial airline there now? And is there updated projections on how the revenues might look going forward to see is it makes sense to maintain that loan or I guess that would be my curiosity on that one.
So Lisa's going to come in and address that one.
So, Justin, I, I'm sorry, I, I, I've done this for so long. I just miss being at this table when you're talking about financial. I'm so sorry. Justin looked at the airport operations and we had a loss this past year of eighty one thousand.
It was about sixty five thousand.
Which is awesome. So if, if those continue to go up, it's very probable that they could have some excess. They have so many needs out there. Though I don't remember why we did this as a note. It was to buy a turbine that spins the, the propellers. Yeah, and it was fifty seven thousand. I think there's some interest in there now. I, I honestly don't remember why we did this as a note, not a transfer. So we, we would like your input on that. I, I, I think we could go either way and be okay.
Can I just ask, does it follow up to Councilmember Richie's? If, if the I can't remember what you called it, if the is expired, the
The promissory
Promissory note is expired. Does that mean that that loan is more than ten years old? Is that promissory note for the ten years? Is that correct?
Or no, they're not. No. I don't remember exactly. So what I can do when I provide the information of when they originated, I can put the original expiration date in there as well.
Okay.
If that would help.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Any other note, any other questions on our inter fund loans? So our hope is to get these, the resolutions done and hopefully clear what we can off of our books. So I will be happy when they're gone because then I don't have to report on them every time. So, okay.
Can, can I ask a, maybe this is, I don't know how I'm gonna, I So with refuse and the sanitary fund that we, those are enterprise funds, correct?
Correct.
Are there, is there anything from a, you, you know, every year we put out that we're going to take so much and put it in so much? Is there some? Are there any reporting that we need to? Is there any reporting that we need to do?
So if we were to write these off, please correct me if I'm not wrong, if I'm wrong, Lisa, but if we were to write these off, we would need to do noticing on those, saying that we were writing these off.
All of them or just?
Just the So, which is, I believe is one reason why administration is wanting to see how, extend the expiration date to the end of the R D A area so that they can possibly try and get what revenue they can from those areas to help pay it back. So we may have to write off a portion of it, but our hope is that it wouldn't be as big. If that makes sense. Thanks. Okay. All right. So general fund balance, as you stated, we did have a good, it's a good, bad finding, I guess. We did have more than the thirty five percent. In the unassigned fund balance, you'll see that that went up by, so overall fund balance increased by five point five million. The unassigned fund balance increased and that was due primarily to the interest income that was recorded on the unrealized gains and losses in our investments. We did talk to Morton as we were reviewing the statements and the processes that we would put in place in order to monitor this, just to find from their clients as well. If anyone does this monthly, they usually do it annually like we did, but we're now analyzing it monthly and watching that. We will be correcting this in a budget opening that will be coming to you that will be moving that excess out of the general fund balance. And then also in the unassigned or in the assigned ba, fund balance, you'll notice that that increased by approximately two point two million. Included in that, we early implemented our compensated absences pronouncement that GASB or the General Accounting Standards Board put out that changed how we recognized compensated absences. So that did, that was a portion of the increase, but also included in this the unused wages that we have at the end of every year for each division. We now have that listed on our financial statements. So we have encumbrances, which are for expenses, and then we have the unused wages. So if you go and look at the financial statements, you'll see a portion that says general fund for wages and that shows each divi, division or departments. I'm sorry, departments, unused wages for the year. As of June thirtieth, yes. So, and as you can see, ten years ago, our fund balance was just under twelve million and we currently have seventy four million, a portion of that is ARPA in the spendable restricted. That's where the ARPA funds are living right now. But we're preparing to do the water line, so we should be seeing that go down as well.
Yeah, just beware, be aware that we will see a drop in our restricted fund balance this year because we've spent all of the, the general governmental portion of the ARPA funds already. We did that through that budget action to use public safety wages. So at the end of this fiscal year, we will see a drop in our restricted fund balance.
So, here's that information in graph form. If you're more of a visual learner and the numbers kind of puts you to sleep, which I know that happens sometimes. So we put together colorful graphs to make you not as tired. So
If they start dancing, that might be the best thing.
I will work on that for next year. And animate that. Okay, so for the R D A fund balance, you will notice quite a big jump. It increased by sixty five million, sixty four million of this is related to the bond that is related to the Wonder Block. So portion of that bond is in the R D A, the other portion is in the M B A. So, and the total, for the total debt of, I believe it was a hundred and twenty three million or just under a hundred and twenty three million. So we will see that go down as well as those funds are spent. Okay, some highlights and challenges that we have, just highlights of the financial statements. And fiscal year twenty four, we had a capital asset investment of sixty one million four hundred thousand approximately. And that includes improvements, vehicles, infrastructure. And this is across all funds, not just the general fund or enterprise funds. So and then we had new bonded debt of a hundred and twenty seven point two million for the Wonder Block development. And again, that's split between the R D A and the M B A. And then we did do early implementation of the GASB pronouncements related to compensated absences. It gave us a chance to make sure we were calculating it right and not doing it last minute and really work through that process with the H B M E and make sure that they didn't have any questions on how we were doing it. And then just a note on our long term debt on the governmental fund, you'll see the additions of the Wonder Block debt. And then we also made payments or we reduced our debt by seven point eight million approximately. Included on here are subscriptions payable and the leases, which Jeff had mentioned. GASB changed how we accounted for those in the past. And then also the compensate absences are included on this too. And then I subscription payables are their I T agreements. So an I T agreement, you have to look and see how long in the foreseeable future you will be using it. And so we look at all the I T agreements that we have in the city that, and do an analysis on those. So, and then this is, here's that same table, but for the enterprise funds, the operating leases, you'll see there's an addition of seven hundred and twenty six thousand. That is related to the Washington Terrace Fire Station that we rent out, that we rent from Washington Terrace City. And the reason it's such a high amount, that's not an annual amount. The reason it's such a high amount is due to how GASB requires us to account for those. It's actually over ten years. You'll notice the amount due within one year is forty four thousand. So any questions on any of the long term debt? Our long term debt in the enterprise funds did go down by four point five million as well. And as I mentioned before, we do apply every year for the G F O A certificate of achievement and excellence in financial reporting. What this requires of us is we do some additional reporting than what's just required by GAAP or generally accepted accounting principles. And it provides, it allows us to provide more transparency and disclosure. We do more detailed charts and graphs and notes. And they have a specific set of requirements for us to get this award. And we were awarded that on the fiscal year twenty three act for, and we submitted for the award in fiscal year twenty four as well. And challenges, Jeff mentioned the new GASB standards that will be coming out that will affect fiscal year twenty twenty six. So we'll be getting ready to implement those. And then we're always faced with the challenges of federal grant standards and reporting. The city does have two new or has, has two positions that are specific for writing grants and they have gotten us quite a few grants. And so with that, put some additional sta, uh, reporting requirements and everything on our office. So we're just working on staying on top of those. And then I put golf and airport cash balance. Both of these, I believe both of them ended with a positive cash balance as of the end of fiscal year twenty four. And part of the reason that they did have positive cash balance was due to funds that were transferred in or received for capital related projects. So as those projects are completed, that cash balance will go down. So we'll just continue to monitor that and communicate any concerns with administration on that. And if needed, figure out a plan to make sure that we keep those cash balances positive. So any questions? Any other questions?
I like it when you guys don't have questions.
Okay, great.
I just wanted, should Sarah's here?
Sarah, do you mind wanting to go next? Just?
Thank you all for having me. It's always exciting to come present to you each year. Just as a note, we have our full annual report and twenty twenty five strategic plan on our website, which you can access via this Q R code or by going to the plans page on our website. Also have some beautiful actual hard copies should anyone want one, but we don't print very many of those anymore. So the website's a great place to do that. And as we look back, it's as a reminder, this is information I present our annual report in our November annual meeting. I've updated some of the numbers to reflect year end, but we're looking back on the twenty twenty four calendar year. And it's always awesome to be able to start your year with some amazing community accolades. Last year, we got to recognize Historic Twenty Fifth Street as the voted number three best main street in the USA by USA Today Reader's Choice. Have another opportunity coming up. I'll just give you the sneak peek to vote again this year. So that's coming soon. But also Snow Basin being ranked the number one resort in the West by both Ski Magazine and USA Today as well. And we also had some amazing celebrations of our own in the community with, you know, it's not very often that you get to celebrate a hundred years. And we had three big hundred year celebrations last year with a hundred years of film being celebrated in the state of Utah, obviously a big film impact here in Ogden City. And the display down at the Capitol was up all year, which was a pretty cool acknowledgement of some of our key films. Hundred years of Piri's Egyptian Theater and obviously a hundred years of Union Station, of which we were really excited to be asked to include some items in the time capsule to be uh include some items in the time capsule to be buried for the next hundred years. So now my graphs and numbers, which are also not animated, but um but are colorful. So hopefully that helps. Um, when we look at the overall health of the tourism economy, we tend to look at our tourism tax collections. Uh we did finish twenty-twenty-four at just under nine point three million dollars or a two percent increase over twenty-twenty-three. Um we are looking at some changes to TRT in this year's legislative session. So I think our baseline maybe changed a little bit for next year, but for now, things are on a good, good trajectory. Last year, I spent some time talking through that we were starting to see our tourism economy normalize. Um, we are started, we're usually a little bit behind the trend line and we started to experience the slowing that we were seeing across the country a little bit earlier in twenty-twenty-three and earlier in twenty-twenty-four. Um you can see that from twenty-three to twenty-four, our trend lines stayed consistent. These go through September, the last month we had data for at that November annual meeting. But they stayed pretty consistent throughout the end of the year. We consider this uh consistent trend line a real win, considering the slowing that was happening across the US and because twenty-twenty-three was another record-breaking year for us. So the fact that we were able to stay consistent with that, instead of seeing some of the steep decreases that some of our colleagues were seeing was a was a win for us. Um, there was that post-COVID travel revenge travel still happening kind of up until this last year. And now we're seeing people start to get back in the, I'm not gonna even call it a new normal, cuz it's not that. But um so Weber County finished um down about two percent in hotel occupancy and Ogden City finished down one percent. But we were up six percent in our average daily rates as we experienced some of inflationary pressures, but also an increased federal per diem and just demand increases. Uh this translated to a five percent decrease in revenue. Our short-term rental market occupancy finished down about one percent. I only have these numbers for Weber County as a whole. Um ADR was down two percent, but because some of those additional units continue to come online, we finished uh with a four percent increase in overall revenue. So these lodging and hospitality sectors are obviously a good indicator as our overnight stays and a guide to the health of our tourism economy. But we can step back now with the data we have and take a broader look um and to some of our community vibrancy and local impact metrics. So we can take a look at visitor behavior and see where our visitors are coming from, where in our community they're visiting, where they're spending their money and how much they're spending on average when they come. Which then allows us a view into where in our community they're visiting and gives us the opportunity to push local shopping, dining, participating in our events and some of those other opportunities to engage locally. Which then in turn leads us to see the overall community impact from the taxes generated. So results from the twenty-twenty-three Kim Gardner Policy Institute's annual county profile study show that visitors to Weber County in twenty-twenty-three spent four hundred and eighty-nine million dollars, uh generating direct tax revenue of more than sixty-one million and indirect of more than of almost seventy-three million. The visitor-generated portion of sales tax revenue at the county level has increased year over year to the eleven point four percent it now represents. Which means that every resident in Weber County, including all of our children, would have to spend an additional eighteen hundred dollars annually to generate the spending that our visitors do in a year. I'd be happy to. Because of all of the money that our visitors spend in our community, and these are out-of-state visitors when they come, every single Weber County resident would have to spend an additional eighteen hundred dollars a year to match what our visitors spend if they all went away. Um, so the work that we do at Visit Ogden, we encapsulate under four pillars. Uh the first is economic impact, which we divide into group sales and destination branding. And Destinations International, which is our international trade association, um produced a report earlier in twenty-twenty-four titled Destination Promotion: A Catalyst for Community Vitality. The goal of this report and many others out there in the industry was to highlight what we, why we as a DMO do what we do and why we are important to our communities. The thing that I try to drive home every single day to our residents and our elected officials and all of our stakeholders. But from that report, the authors state, "We are all vying for attention. It isn't just about getting noticed. It's about attracting visitors, consumers, talent, businesses, and investment. We are not only working to boost brand awareness, we are devising strategies and programs that drive spending, fuel business growth, create jobs, and generate tax revenue. We champion our destination to event and meeting and conference planners to deliver significant economic impact through their events. And the creation of this strong destination brand is really crucial to what we do. It gives us an opportunity to stand out amongst our competitors, be discovered and easily found. It's what piques people's interest initially, drives them to visit, and then potentially live or work and invest in our community and encourages them to share their experiences with others. These benefits impact our local businesses, residents, and elected officials through our tax revenues. By strategically managing our brand, we attract attention and inspire people to visit and engage in our community. So we try to ensure that you understand all of the realms under which we're trying to accomplish this, instead of just the more traditional marketing elements." But to start there, if we look at group sales, in twenty-twenty-four, we hosted fifty-nine groups for an economic impact of over seventeen million dollars. We created with the Conference Center team another successful worldwide review, hosting twelve hundred attendees from twenty-eight countries. And the success of this event has led to an exciting new opportunity that we're working with the Ogden City Economic Development Team and the OEC team on to support Hill's Supply Chain Management Group. This new Hype or Hill Industry Partner Exchange Symposium will take place in May of twenty-twenty-six for its inaugural run. And we all know baseball has become a very big player, uh no pun intended, in our community. Um our partnership with Triple Crown has opened our community up to so many events, as I know you've been hearing about. Um I continually am talking to Ed and trying to find more dates available on our fields. And there just really isn't any time left on the calendar with all the events that are coming into the community. We did this year sign uh Triple Crown's Fast Pitch Softball to a ten-year contract and their Best of the West Baseball Tournament to another three. And we have a third Triple Crown event coming into our community, including some other uh producers. Um, in speaking of the success of a great destination brand, uh our marketing team decided it was time for a brand refresh. We'd had the same brand uh being communicated for about twenty years and decided it was time to not get rid of it, but just to update it a bit. So they created a beautiful representation of our brand that has really helped buoy the awareness of what we're doing amongst our community members as we've been working to get that out. Um, the new website launch that came along with that, uh obviously, anyone who's been involved in these efforts knows the thousands of hours that go into developing not only new brand look and guidelines, but new website launch and all the corresponding content and imagery that goes with that. And even though there's an anticipated decrease of metrics, um as you lose your Google rankings and different things with a new site, um we've seen a thirty-eight percent increase in our active users and one of our key goals, which is pushing people to our partners. We have um in the, since the launch of the site in April, we have sent more than forty-four thousand clicks to our partners. Uh our winter twenty-three, twenty-four campaign, so you have to look back a whole year for this one. But it allowed us to take advantage of our new photography and video assets that we were capturing for that uh refreshed brand and website launch. And that year, we also had Ski Magazine rankings for both Powder Mountain and Snow Basin as the number one and number two resorts going into that season. Our active users um engaging with our campaign increased forty-four percent. Engaged users were up fifty-six percent and total sessions were up forty-seven percent. Fortunately, mother. Contributing with some snow, so we're hoping to see some great results from this year as well. Agency partner to create some awesome spring, summer, and fall campaigns. For our summer campaign, our engaged sessions were up fifty-eight percent. On Instagram, our reach has increased by more than two hundred and fifty percent and our content interactions are up a hundred percent. We also are now investing more in spring and fall than in previous years to try to drive demand in these slower season uh months to even out our six months cycle, seasonality. Um as we look at our second pillar of destination stewardship, it's worth noting that a lot of the work that goes into each of these pillars actually overlaps. So you'll see some overlap with destination branding in this destination stewardship pillar. But um we, it was really fun to be able to welcome the International Olympic Committee to our community in April of twenty-twenty-four ahead of the twenty-thirty-four Olympic announcement. Obviously welcoming Breeze to the community and supporting community economic development with the airport remodel and visitor information. Um we produce a month-long campaign called Ogden Eats to continue to um encourage the patronization of our local restaurants during what is a historically a very slow month for them. We're also continuing to work with the city and county on our ski bus routes, additional stops, and additional transportation around town. Um accessibility initiatives, including hidden disabilities and others. And then we use this pillar as an opportunity to figure out ways we can reach our community and our stakeholders from an education and engagement opportunity. So we create quarterly partner trainings. Um we also secured three EDA grants, one to finalize our destination stewardship plan, one for an arts and cultural tourism impact study that we're working with Ogden City's Arts and Culture and Events Team on, and the Kiesel Avenue Art Project Implementation, of which we were able to secure some funding to help Ogden City Arts with that project. Advocacy, um Jack Johnson from Destinations International states, um "I have often framed advocacy as the work we must get right, because if we don't, we might not be given the opportunity to do anything else right." Um, there is unfortunately kind of a consistent fear that simmers in the back of the mind of every DMO leader that our funding is going to be under attack or uh diminished for some reason. And I can't imagine why we'd feel that way, considering what's happening at the state level every year. But our advocacy efforts have tended to come from a place of defensiveness. But we want to reach past that and look at them as an opportunity to empower us to do more, explain more of what we can do, be more for our communities, and ultimately be that catalyst for destination vibrancy. We just need our stakeholders and partners to understand the breadth of the work that is happening there to do that. Obviously, under this pillar, our um advocacy work down at the legislature is a big piece of this in twenty-twenty-four. That primarily was consumed by Major League Baseball talk. This year, it's being consumed by TRT legislation, um Tourism Marketing Performance Fund funding, some short-term rental legislation. And then never-ending uh list anymore. I'm just glad I'm not in education because their bills go on and on and on. But um I also had the opportunity to participate. The host city of the twenty-twenty-four Olympics Paris hosted a series of host city workshops um that I was able to participate in, really giving some inside scoop to what it means to host an event of that magnitude. So took away learnings from that that we're already working on um implementing in our community through an Ogden Area Olympic Committee that we've formed. And finally, team development. I obviously want to ensure that we have the most knowledgeable, educated, effective team um out of anyone. Uh Millie Oskathorpe, who has now left us to move on to the Florida Sports Foundation, was named one of Destination International's Thirty Under Thirty last year. Taylor has had his Weber State Master's Thesis approved, which is Brand Reputation and Management of Place, which will obviously be impactful for us. And I was appointed to the Destinations International Board of Directors. So because this is an annual report, I'm not going to dive into our twenty-twenty-five strategic plan at this point, but wanted to point out again, it is available with all of our goals and performance metrics outlined on our website, if anyone is interested in taking a look at that. But looking forward, I did wanna just give you a sneak peek into our new creative because it's pretty cool. So just some fun imagery trying to reflect um the welcoming nature of our community, the kind of laid-back nature or embracing of our natural assets and our protection of them as well. And uh just the fact that we're getting ready to welcome the world. With that, I thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Now that's dancing. Where's Coralie?
I can always put videos in.
Thanks for letting you. Awesome. Thanks, Sarah. Well, next is, we we just moved it around a little bit, Janine?
Hey, um, so this will be sort of the last day that uh work session that we're gonna talk about city image and reputation. And fiscal sustainability, the uh five-year strategic plan. Uh, one of the, to- today we're talking about city image, reputation, and fiscal sustainability. And one of the metrics um in city image and reputation was uh doing a citizen survey. And uh we actually had uh Utah State University do a well-being survey. This is a survey that they run all across uh Utah for different cities. And uh that will actually be reported to you in March. I had her scheduled for tonight, but I wasn't sure if we were gonna have enough time. So I moved her uh to next month. So that should be um a great opportunity to hear that. So as always, I just wanna do a quick review of how the strategic plan was developed. Um Tanner LLC was was uh hired after doing um an RFP to provide this service. Uh then we put together a strategic uh planning advisory committee made up of uh committee members, residents uh from across walks of life. Uh and then they really got to work. They they did a really great job, along with Mackie Smith, who worked for Tanner at the time. So they did a bunch of surveys, they had dialogue sessions, met with community organizations and stakeholders. And then they developed some key directives. They directed the primary directive. And then they identified four strategic directives, which or or pillars. And then strategic initiatives, which are really the action items. And they set goals and metrics for the measurements of success for those strategic initiatives. And uh you as a council and the administration have used these strategic uh initiative or strategic directives each year during the budget process to determine um how you wanna spend your funds. Uh the primary directive, um leverage our unique location, outdoor recreation, diverse population, and rich history to offer residents, businesses, and guests a vibrant community that leads people to call Ogden home. They developed the strategic initiative directives, economic development, community safety, recreation, city image and reputation, financial sustainability. So we covered um community and economic development. Um, sorry, community, economic development and community safety and recreation in the prior two weeks. Um, and there are links to those work sessions and packets in um tonight's um staff review. And then tonight, we are talking about the remaining. And then tonight we are talking about the remaining items. So I city image and reputation, I think that this was kind of, it's kind of a subjective feeling and kind of hard to put numbers to, to a feeling or reputation. And a lot of what was covered in this section had to related to Ogden schools, which of course the city doesn't control or manage. However, in the work session that you just had with the school board on February 6th, they did report some really great work that they're doing and making some great strides with kind of the work that they're doing with their with their kids. So improved public school image, improved public perceptions, commercial occupancy rate, cleanliness and good appearance of city entrances. Northern part of Ogden, recognizing those contributions, resident satisfaction, increased feeling of inclusion and positive employee survey responses. We also don't have any information about positive of the employee survey responses. I don't think we do one annually and that's something we can certainly talk about if you think it's would be helpful. For fiscal sustainability, this was something that the council added. Initially, there was only four directives. And these are the metrics that you as a council picked, fund balance, general fund debt, bond ratings, audit findings and state audit score. So it was good to line this up with the reports from the auditor and on from our own comptroller's office on the ACF. So we're going to have Justin come up and kind of talk a little bit, some things. You will notice that a lot of things that have been reported in previous weeks sort of overlap because they 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 kind of can fit into several categories. So, Justin.
We can grab one of these and give it to you. Where where do you want to sit? Or is it up here?
Council member Myers graciously is sharing his microphone with me. Thank you. Yeah, so city image and reputation. So this is something as public services, we are excited about. There's a lot of things that we get to promote. As in everything that from our our trails and our fantastic parks to having wayfinding and other amenities. You know, we've talked a little bit on safety when we've talked about our streets. But also that's something when I go into an area, the curb appeal of how something is kind of dictates of, you know, cleanliness and curb appeal dictates kind of the image of what you expect to see where. So that's that's something we work really hard to improve, like street projects. And we see 20th Street when we've done Washington to Quincy up there. And we've just recently completed that. But typically, we don't promote undergrounding stuff or the curb appeal. But something we've done with that street is we took the the power poles. As you go east up that street, that's all underground now. And so as you look up east, you get to see wonderful old cap mountain heading east. And that that's something that we we take great pride in. You get to see good sidewalks, you get to see crosswalks and a lot of safety and bike lanes. And so things that promote a healthy, thriving community that way. Also, as you drive around downtown, you get to see some wayfinding signs to promote. We've, I know that's something Sarah is behind me that worked really hard pressing me to make sure that those get done. And so we're also working on doing some entryway features and and other things to to make make things very vibrant. Also with our parks and playgrounds, that's another thing that we we work continually. Monty and his crews do a fantastic job of not only installing, but also maintenance. They they take that very seriously and want to make sure that once they install something and then keep things very vibrant and clean and safe and and remove any vandalism or anything else that comes their way. But all in all, throughout all the work that we do, you know, parks that are mowed, having having them clean, having our golf courses when you show up, you know, to go golfing, having that represent somewhere that you want to be and enjoy your next four hours of golf. Of course, with me, it's probably the next five hours of golf, but there's others that they're typically four foot. So those are just all exciting things of making sure, you know, and we talked about having our baseball fields and things, a lot of tournaments from the outside. So I don't think those things happen and continue to happen with Triple Crown and D1. And I think Perfect Games coming this year. We don't have something that's very representative of of a place want to come and play ball and participate in the facilities out, so.
Did you want to mention the Harris, the Harrison?
Oh, yeah, the the entryway sign. So the the sign on the south that that is removed. We are waiting for a hookup from Rocky Mountain Power. So we continually, every couple of weeks, we kind of give them a nudge to get a kind of push them on getting that new drop for us so that we can put that in. But yeah, we're really excited on installing that new entryway marker and are going to look to do more of those. So that should be coming soon. It should hopefully just be another, well, with the weather, hopefully another couple of months away. Any questions?
Okay, thanks. And then I think Lisa's going to come up and talk about some of the inroads. Obviously, you've heard some from Coralie, Justin and Jeff from HBM, HBME.
Thank you. I I did, I did always enjoy presenting the financial report. So I'm glad that I can be here in some capacity to talk about financials. Janine had put a couple of things in her slides. One was about. Janine, if you want to share the bond ratings. Right, we probably ought to talk to them about your microphones. And so each of these ratings is based on the type of of bond that we're taking out. When we did the WIFIA, I just wanted to mention this. When we did the WIFIA loan, we got probably what's closest to a citywide credit rating. It's just, it's just a general city credit rating of an A1. And Brenda, who was that from? That was for Moody's. When you look at the ratings for for Moody's, an A1 is not at the top. It's it's like the third one down. But that's just a general idea of a credit of the general credit rating. There's several things that go into a bond rating. One of it is your financial health. So looking at our fund balance, that's a huge thing that they do. But they also look at our debt structure, our economy as a whole, the Ogden City and Utah economy, the this, the the national economy. They look at demographic factors and and that is one area that we we struggle in because of our our average median income is lower. And and then they look at the practices of the governing body and administration. So every time we we do a credit rating, we spend a lot of time talking about these issues with with the credit agency. And and the fact that we've had such good credit ratings really, I think, speaks a lot to the interest of the council. The financial principles you put in place, that's something we provide them. They're always very impressed that that we've got those in place through through a a joint resolution. And then I wanted to just touch on the fraud risk assessment that we do each year. I brought a copy so I could remember there were like two things that we didn't get a score for. So they give you a score and you either get it or you don't. And there were two areas that we did not get a score in. But we are actually in the lowest risk, the 355 score that we received this year. That's that's the the green, the most green area. So we are a pretty low risk. We have a pretty robust control environment, internal control environment and very qualified staff to to watch the the money and the policies and make sure those are followed to the best of our ability. But the two areas that we were marked down on was some training that that we could add for board members. And then some formal internal audit function. And I I think an internal audit function is hard to have. But I will make the recommendation if councils everywhere ever worried about an area, we can hire an external firm to come in and do agreed upon procedures. And that is a way that that we could have a kind of a de facto internal audit function.
Can I just insert, so the fraud risk assessment is something that the state auditor's office has instigated, right? And I don't know, it's been in place five years?
Three or four years. Not very long. And it's just, it's really, they look to make sure we have a good separation of controls. One of the big separations that we need to have as a city is that we have a separate treasurer who has custody of our cash and a separate comptroller who reconciles our books. And and we do a good job with that separation of controls. The other thing that I just, I wanted to point out, Brandon, I don't know if you can bring up that website. On the state transparency website, I I really won't go into the financials or where we're at. We obviously have a healthy fund balance. I looked, it's 23%, which I think is about $22 million. We will be asking council to move some of that into our CIP fund to hold for future CIPs. And that will bring us down closer to that that 20% again, which is kind of the benchmark that we've set for our an assigned fund balance. So if you go up to the top where it says entity, there's a dropdown screen and it's the financial distress. And if you'll pull up Ogden City, I just, I, so what the state auditor does is take just some statistics from our financial report. And they do some, just some qualitative marks, I guess, to to see if you're in good shape or if you're financially distressed. And we are actually in really good shape. I would even argue that that general fund revenue to expenses is is artificially high because of our ARPA funds. We recognized all the revenue in 2021 when we received it and we're recognizing expenses over time. So that's looking at the ratio of expenditures to revenue. And and so there is, you know, it's going to be kind of mismatched, that revenue versus expenses. So this is just a dashboard for every city. If you pull up North Ogden, it looks very similar to this. So I I don't think that's an uncommon, or if the the city council made a decision like we did last year or the year before, I don't remember, to use fund balance for parks, land purchases. That would increase our expenditures over our fund balance, our general fund revenue. Those those kind of things can affect that statistic. So. Any questions or?
Thanks, Lisa. Do we have a link on our website to for people to?
I don't, but we can certainly add one.
I don't know, just good news is always good to let people know.
Thank you.
Until it's not.
Until it's not right.
Okay, just to follow up, so. Okay, there we go. So for the strategic plan and the final report, anybody that wants to take a look at it, deeper dive, can go to ogdencity.com. Either Ogden Strategic Plan, that will bring up the the original strategic plan. And then strategic plan final report comes up right after that. So that's where you can find this information. We have had some discussions about renewing a strategic plan and decided to kind of hold off until we get the general, the general plan done. And then kind of maybe incorporate some of those items into a new strategic plan for the upcoming years and and maybe folding some of our other planning documents into that. So the CIP and those things. So this is a topic that we will probably discuss in this, in the strategy, strategy session on March 25th. So look forward to that. Do you have any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
I was going to put that on strategy meeting.
So as I've meant, as mentioned, so it's the fourth Tuesday in March. So we thought that that would be a good time to take and just figure out our dance moves there. No, and I think we're looking for, we have a couple of things that we're going to talk about or thought about, talking about, which was the flash vote, the strategy or the strategic plan. But if there are other things that come to mind that would be helpful, let us know. Anything else? Council business, is there anything that anybody wants to? Janine, anything else?
I don't think so. I think we're good. I should have had the USU professor come, but this is an art, not a science. I never know quite how much, how many questions are going to be here.
It'll run right to 601, so. All right, well, okay.
I did have a a member of the school board reach out. They're they're interested in having a conversation and invited council members to participate. I don't know if you received anything on that, Marsha, but or vice chair, sorry, or chair, I don't, I get it right. But anyway, this Saturday at four o'clock, so they they'd like to see if there's three council members who'd like to attend. And you're planning to attend, okay. So I'm not sure I'll be able to with my schedule on Saturday, but it's, I can send the information for the address, but just to have a discussion about immigration stuff, so.
You know why she only wanted three? I mean, I don't know that, was that just?
It's not really related to school district. A couple of different organizations that kind of represent that community.
Four o'clock on Saturday. It's, no, it's, it's not, yeah, she just happens to be, she's on the school district and she reached out to me. So it's just community members that like to get together.
Yeah, do you recall in 2017? I actually wasn't on the council yet, but a council member and several other community members came together with some other inner faith groups to talk with Ogden City Administration, the police chief and the mayor about, you know, pending actions and related to ICE and helping to make the community feel comfortable and safe. And so I think it's a conversation related to that, like, for example, and at my organization, we put out a message about how we fall federal, follow federal and state laws, of course, but there are certain things that we don't do it when you come to the hospital. So when you come to the hospital, we don't ask for your immigration status. We don't divulge that voluntarily. If you tell someone that, we don't tell other people what that is. And then how we have the specific procedures for if ICE or those kinds of agencies come into the hospital and want information about patients or people that work at the hospital. So just a general state. So just a general statement about that. And we did that as, or you all did that as a council in 2017, you passed a resolution that talked about that.
And what is the location of that?
So it's a.
And let's not say it publicly.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send that out. Yep. Sounds good.
Anything else? All right, well, we are adjourned until 6.